Good evening, everyone. This is the work meeting of the City of Pleasantville. Today is February the 5th, 2024. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper and performance with the Open Public Meetings Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Roll call, please. Dan Port.
Present.
Gunnell Aaron.
Here.
Kamala.
Present.
Correa.
Present.
Mark Clay.
Present.
Oles Biesma.
Present.
Thomas.
Present.
All of them. We're going to go into executive session. It should not be that long. I guess if all of you could leave and someone will instruct you to come back again.
Motion.
So can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
All in favor? Next, we have the agenda review, Madam Chair. Can I get a motion to approve previous amendments?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to pause? CNN?
First on the ordinance is ordinance number one. Second reading, public hearing will be held on regular session. Fixing the salaries of officials and employees of the city.
Any questions? CNN?
Ordinance number two, exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cat bank. First reading.
Any questions? CNN?
Resolution 22, authorizing a fiscal year 2024 local recreation improvement grant application under by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs.
Madam Chair, can you elaborate on this, please?
Certainly. There's additional funding. Additional funding from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs under the COVID monies, which the state is really pushing for municipalities to use that money for more recreational activities. You know, specifically trying to get municipalities to be conscious of being healthy and going back outdoors after being closed there for COVID for two years. So with that being said, we are looking at our new park that we're constructing and trying to make that a standard of art attraction and any additional funds that are coming in specifically around that project we are going to a fight for and hopefully we'll get to help leverage funding for that park.
Madam Chair?
Resolution 23, amending the agreement between the city and the County of Atlantic for the installation and maintenance of flashing signal equipment at various locations.
Madam Chair?
The county has a capital improvement project that was on their radar for probably several years now, and they were behind schedule due to COVID. So they are asking the city, because some of their improvements involve our Main Street, where there's intersections, particularly around our schools, where flashing lights are needed. Because they are behind schedule, they are asking the municipalities, Pleasantville being one, to extend that agreement to give them time to get caught up with all of their planning and projections so that they can start the project soon. So this is just an extension agreement. The agreement is already in place and are asking for an extension of the agreement so that they can move forward with the project.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Resolution 24, authorizing a tax collector to cancel and refund property charges.
Any questions? CNN?
Resolution 25, endorsing and supporting the New Jersey Department of Transportation closure of Decatur Avenue.
This is another improvement project. This is from the New Jersey Department of Transportation. We probably will not see the manifestation of this project for another few years. What this resolution does is to support the need for traffic improvements at Route 9 and Blackwood Pike. As we all know, we've been very fortunate there where it hasn't been a lot of incidents, but it is a busy and dangerous intersection. So they'll be doing some studies over there. Should this be approved eventually, they'll do studies over there, which will cause some closures on Decatur Avenue as they do the studies to count the traffic flow and any other issues that they may study for traffic improvement so that they could come up with a plan that would suffice for that intersection.
Thank you. Any questions? CNN? Madam Chair?
Resolution 26, authorizing the invitation of a corrective action plan for the 2022 city's budget.
Any questions?
Hold it, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 27, authorizing execution of an amended agreement of sale and amended and reinstated redevelopment agreement with Savage Collaborations LLC regarding California Avenue redevelopment plan.
Any questions? CNN?
Next is review of the bills.
Good evening. Let me go over the bills that were paid between last council meeting and this council meeting. If you look on page one, you'll see right in the middle says South State $60,000. Then below that, near the bottom, it says South State $515,000. That was an in-progress payment for Decatur Avenue repairs and sewer infrastructure down on Decatur Avenue. If you go to page two, at the very bottom, no air transfers, you'll see things for payroll, for medical costs, and two small debt service payments that we made in February 1st. The bills to be approved, if you look at those, most of all of them are just our operating procedures. I will point out a couple of them that are a little larger than normal. If you go down to the bottom of page two, you'll see CME for both Adbury Boulevard improvements as well as Bayview Avenue Joker Field Engineering Works. That brings us up to date with them on those two projects. If you go to, jump over to page three, right in the middle, these cyber security experts. This is a new company. In your path, we had Mainland, off of Mainland Computer doing our cloud coverage. They're no longer in business. We, through EHT, we were able to find a cyber security expert to do our cloud backup at a cost that was less than we were being charged by Mainland. Fourth, on the bottom of page, enforce this three system. This is a software program for PD. An annual program that we do. On page four, you'll see fifth one down, flash one condominium. As you know, we reimburse for trash. This payment, we asked us to pay this in November last year. We needed additional backup before we would reduce the funds. And then Duran, right below, Duran Engineering. This has been working on for probably about 18 months or two years. Going to Staleport to do some engineering work over at Staleport behind the police station. Near the bottom of that page also, SHI International. This is an annual payment for virus software to keep us as safely as possible from the outside world. And if you look at page five, Midland Fire and Air. As you know, we're hiring new additional firefighters, and that takes equipment we have to purchase for them. For fire, for equipment, for, I guess, Chief Todd, I'll give you more. Everything that they need for the academy as well as their own equipment that we need in case they had to fight a fire. Boots, helmets.
Basically, this is the ensemble and also the escape harnesses to prevent death for the IDPs we hired and also the six new recruits. This is a 10-year outfit, the turnout gear that we wear. So it's fit for the firefighter. So that's, you know, we had to purchase that.
If you go to page six, in the middle, Planet Technologies. Again, this is more software to protect them. This is going to our email server that we have throughout the city. This is an annual fee, and actually the fee was the same as last year. And other than that, that's our normal operating bills. At the bottom of page eight, you'll see every time. Any questions on any of these bills? We'd be happy to talk to you.
Yes, Mr. Louie, can you do me a favor?
Sure.
Can you explain to me the one with Cooper Levinson? I think it is 066559.
Sure.
Does it make a sense?
There are another two bills with Cooper Levinson. One is for, I believe it was $5,000. That was for negotiations with PBA. This has been ongoing. The other one was a bill that was submitted, well, they said it was submitted, we never saw it, from January 23. They called last week, want to know where the bills were, and we never received them. I did a research on everything we had paid Cooper Levinson in the last 15 months, those bills weren't among them. It was, one was like a $2,700, one was $63, one was $299. Had to do with work that was done in December of '22 before they were redeemed of their duties.
Any other questions about the builders? Thanks, Baron. Next, we have public portion on agenda items only.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Tim Jones of Pleasantville, and I know we're going to have a hearing on the ordinance number one in the regular meeting coming up, but I would share some information with the public, and I would just like to share with the public with regards to our ordinance number one that we're going to be undertaking. And Mr. D, did you know, you know, did you know that right now, the elected people's salaries in all the cities around us, Northfield, EHT, and Absekin, they are less, they pay less for city council and mayor than anybody. We pay more than everybody. We pay $130,000 a year in salaries to you. Where in Northfield, they pay $63,000, EHT $91,000, Absekin $88,000. And then to hear that you want an $80,000 a year collected, we'll raise on top of that, which will take you to $210,000. It just seems astronomical, and I think the public needs to be aware of those figures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. Jose Alcantara, Pleasantville resident attorney. I want to thank you all for the services that you do. Anytime we have criticism of each other, there's always goodwill intended, and we're going to have differences, and that's okay. We're not the same people. As long as those differences are workable, you know, that's it. And as long as we don't get into the level of using vulgarity, I'm not saying you do, I'm saying everybody, then this city can improve by having that general goodwill, even though we have differences. And I don't have a problem getting a little raised. I said that before. And also the mayor, because you are working a lot of hours, a lot of time, but this is too much. This is too much, this is too much money. You know, we understand you have to put hours up there, but this is, this is supposed to be a job that you're doing for the good of the community, you know, not to make money. And I'm not saying this is not much to make anyway, you know, but this is, we can't afford it. And I know that, I came to court today, I'm a lawyer, municipal court of Pleasantville is closed. It's now being handled in Atlantic City as a cost-saving measure. Wow. And we kind of lost that. Why? Because the money, that's an example. And groups like the Jokers, you know, who are, you know, sports team here in Pleasantville, they're hurting for money to kids to have things to do. And we're, you know, doing this, and we all got to sacrifice a little bit. That's what we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Marla Williams. Question. What is your salary now? And how long has each individual been on the board? Usually you get a raise when you've done something productive. Okay? So we, I know, Mr. Oles Biesma. How long you been? What is your salary?
I mean, I'm asking a question. I mean, is it public knowledge?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm just asking, do you know what your salary is? How long you been in office?
I just ended my first three-year term. I'm going into my next three-year term. Our salary is about $12,000 a year, and I don't know when the last time there was a raise. I don't have any idea.
So as everybody across the board is talking about it.
Except the mayor. It doesn't go off by how long you've been, there's no long chat here.
Anyone else want to comment?
Would you ever get a answer?
Yes.
Theodore Edwards. Everybody wants a raise, everybody, but if you have money to give all these big raises, right, what about the city? What about the city? This city looks a mess. I haven't seen a street cleaner in five years, okay? I think I had called Judy one time, like on my corner at Edgely Avenue, from all the dirt and stuff in the street, I have to get out there and dig the mud and put it in the trash can, okay? We have no city facilities. If you need to hire somebody to do these things, if you've got money to do this, okay? The taxes are high enough, we don't need any more raises in taxes, not whatsoever. I work every day, every day, so I can maintain, because I certainly can't live off a social security check by any means, okay? I am 78 years old. Okay? And I have to get out there and dig the mud, okay? I have to get out and clean all the dirt and the trash that comes down to my corner. I have to do it. Where's the street cleaner? Where is it? Where are the workers that used to do all that? The last time I called about the street cleaner was, they said it was broke. That was like four or five years ago. It's still broke down? You have people that have retired that you haven't replaced, okay? You're going to spend some money. You need to spend some money in this city. You need to clean up these streets, you need to fix these problems. I said to Judy one day, I said, you know what? You need to pay us to ride these streets, they so pay. Every street, every, every. The only decent street we have now is where they fixed Enzy Boulevard, which is beautiful. Which is beautiful, okay? Come on. Put some money into this city. Beautify this city for a change. It's a sloppy mess. It's also a deterrent for somebody that wants to come in here and buy something when they take a look at it, on top of the taxes being sky-high, you know? Absolutely. You've got to have people going out of here, not coming in here. So work on that with some money.
Excuse me, ma'am, what street you talking about? I didn't hear the street name you were saying.
I live at the corner of Wright and Edgely Avenue. Okay? Dirt, dirt, dirt.
I have a couple of questions. One, you made a promise that you were going to look out for the jumpers, that they were going to get the jackets, that they brought the championship home, and they were going to get that field done. What happened? What happened to the, what happened to the, to the promise? The kids don't even have a brand-new banner. They didn't even get nothing.
It's one of you, right? It's agenda items only.
Excuse me, but I'm addressing a couple of things.
No, it's agenda items only. The second portion of the meeting, then you can say.
Okay, well then, let's address, when did all of y'all switch positions and we weren't notified? Because you weren't the president, you were sitting on this side, okay? We want to know, when did all of y'all switch positions and why weren't we notified?
Okay, we want to stick with agenda items only, and then you can add something next session.
Okay, let's go to the raise part. Okay, because there's half of y'all that don't even have the credentials to be asking for that money. But we got people that's sitting down here that do, that do, and ain't nobody bragging, okay? We just saying the truth. How you expect to get paid more in Pleasantville than Northfield and Edgely Township and Absekin, okay? There's no way, when look at how our city looks. There's no way. You took our taxes and raised them way up, okay? You might have put a freeze for the older ones, okay, but that's only for a certain length of time, okay? They, they are hurting. You got a lot of people hurting. You got a lot of people homeless. Why don't we do something with some of these empty buildings and turn them into that going low-income apartments instead of bringing in outside contractors, okay, and they want to put us up out of here? And you selling it to them for the same thing that you done estimated somebody's house at? Which is not right. Which is not right. How are we supposed to clean up Pleasantville if we got more homeless people walking around if they are originally from here? But then y'all want a raise? Show us why you want this raise. Show us who you hired to replace the people that retired, because I'm tired of calling the city. I done called the city yard so many times, they know my name, they know my voice, okay? I ain't even got to say who I am, okay? It's ridiculous. If we're going to work together as a team, okay? And I'm keeping it real, if we're going to work together as a team, we have a bunch of people that actually is qualified to take these jobs and can pass them drug tests and don't have a criminal record.
Thank you.
Why can't we have these people?
Thank you.
In these positions?
Thank you. Anyone else? Got to show up at the polls.
My question wasn't done yet.
I know everybody deserves, I'm not saying that no one deserves a raise or a little bit of money. But last year, when we had to go off on money because, you know, you said we had to pay a little bit more for the sewer bill, and we had to pay a little bit more for the real estate taxes, and we fought against it, but we realized that it had to be done so, to improve the city, okay? So we, we took that on, but now we're taking on more if you take, take a raise. And we're already, in this city, we're borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, okay? We're Peter out here. These people are all Peter, because we're just like, whatever you do, it's costing us the money. Yeah, okay, because a lot of these places that had these buildings that we gave abatements to, they're really not giving, paying the taxes that we are paying. They're paying the percentage, but not what they really should be paying. So what I'm saying is, I know that you all, everybody deserves to get a little bit of money, but I think at this time and place, we should think about waiting, holding off, and seeing how the citizens of Pleasantville are going to handle the raises that they've already got. My neighborhood's full of senior people. They, they're in their 70s, and they're, they're going back to work because they can't afford it. They can't afford to, to eat, like, you know, and it is really sad, because they, this town is being built on the older people. The younger people, they're not going to stay.
Nope.
Because, you know, they, they just like, oh, well, taxes get too high, I'll just sell my house, or I'll just leave it. We have kids, like, okay, so something happens to us, our kids don't even want to come and stay in Pleasantville because your taxes are so high. So I'm just saying, you know, let us think, let you think about it, and then come back at another time and address this. That's all I'm asking, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Lee Sanchez, longtime resident of Pleasantville. I'm not opposed to you guys getting a raise. I'm opposed to you guys getting a raise at this time. I've been around politics, I'm 44, 44 years of my life. 15 years ago, I thought you guys needed more money. 15 years ago, Pleasantville a lot of work for Pleasantville. All I'm asking you guys, as you sit here as elected officials, is to, when you come in and you vote on different agenda items and different issues, like the young lady said before you, the abatements, had we didn't give all these abatements out, you guys could have got your raise. If we didn't give that land away for dirt cheat, you guys could have got your raise. What that land should have did was been a 55 and above community, because they would have gave back to the community and not took out of the community. So all I'm asking you guys to do as elected officials, when you sit up there is, when you vote on something, think about the longevity of it, what's going to happen later, because when everybody voted for these abatements, there was a raise. So I'm not saying you guys don't deserve raises, you do. You deserved it 15, 20 years ago. But now, we're in a standstill. We gave, we gave Pleasantville away for free. We have people coming in from the outside not paying anything. All I'm asking is, for the future, when you guys vote on things, just think a longevity of the other, because at the end, like now, right now, you guys are suffering for your votes before. That's all I'm just saying.
I just wanted to comment. You have the second part of this meeting, you have the second part of the meeting?
Yes. The regular meeting.
I hope I did.
Anyone else want to comment?
Good evening, Jerry King. Resident of the city. Number of concerns, citizen in Pleasantville. As it pertains to this raise, we all know that cost of living is what it is. Everything's gotten higher, more expensive. We're aware of that. But you know, sometime, you know, my dad used to say sometime you have to have those hard conversations, those difficult conversations nobody wants to have. And my question to you is, as elected officials, and I was reminded of this oath which is forward to the Constitution, the federal constitution first, the New Jersey Constitution second, and like, we always, I hear you guys talk about the fact that the city is, you know, on a hard time, you don't have money, need ratables, and my question is, this $80,000, like, where's it coming from? The city is already broke? The city is already broke? Where's it coming from? I mean, I'm at this point now, like, we went through this whole mathematical equation about this building down here that they're trying to build at the old high school site. I said it before, the math don't matter. I'm beginning to think-
I'm beginning to think that you guys can't abstract, multiply, or divide. Cause the math does not matter. And it's not personal, understand something. My father told me, everybody that smiles at you and says nice things to you is not your friend. Everybody gets in your face and challenges you to be better than you ever thought you could be is not your enemy. That person's challenging you because they want you to be better. We want y'all to be better than this. We not, we not just fucking trying, we're not just trying to cause a problem. We know you have it in, in you to be better than this. And if you don't, you better learn real quick. Because organization that I belong to, we got a voting block of about two hundred people, so I hope y'all real comfortable. Cause you might not be there, cause we have enough votes now to change the whole face of the city. Believe that. When we were talking about the whole thing at the, at the high school, this gentleman mentioned, oh, well, I didn't see any lawsuit. Well, does the city really need another lawsuit? Do we really have to do that? To get your attention? And we've already discussed it. We talked about it, but we know that it doesn't benefit the city. Another lawsuit that costs the city money, that's crazy. So I say be reasonable. And I, I, I still need to answer where this eighty thousand is coming from. Or, or, or is it just that old, or is it just that same political maneuver that when the city overspans, they balance the budget on the backs of people to make the. Is that it? I don't know, I'm, I mean, help me out, help me understand, where is this eighty thousand coming from? Can anybody tell me?
Thank you, Mr., Mr. King.
Can I get an answer to my question, please? I know my time's up, but can I get an answer to my question? That's you talking, not me. Oh, the answer is you don't have it.
Good evening everyone. Of course I live in A Carver Township. But I have property in Pleasantville, and I pay a lot of taxes. My question to you is, you are city officials. And I know it's public records. How many of you pay taxes in Pleasantville? And the question is, okay, so you're taking away from other people. And I, I have property in Pleasantville, cause I'm trying to help other people. What are you doing to help people? You're taking away and you don't even pay taxes in Pleasantville. So how many of you pay taxes in Pleasantville?
Can you get an answer?
Sit it on count. I know you did your own, but I'm just saying. Search your heart. Search your heart. Thank you. Is this awesome? Cause I want my community people to hear me. Good afternoon, city council.
Good evening.
Um, sometime ago, each one of you solicited votes from these people out here. It's not a C, it's a little W. You solicited votes from these people here. Can we solicit your vote to table ordinance number one? And for, to, uh, for further consideration? I believe that we deserve to have input on your increases. Because you work for us. And you didn't ask the employee if you could get a eighty per, uh, eighty percent increase. How unfair is that? This is not your individual company. If you have your own company, give yourself the biggest increase you can get. But you're running a city, a very deprived city at that. And you have the nerve to sit there to really rationalize that you, not that you don't deserve it. We're not taking away from the deserving, although I question that. But eighty percent for real? I need to be on city council. This is the greatest part-time job going ever. I don't have to do anything. I don't have to improve my city. I can just count on these people to get tax increases so I can get a raise. Raise up, city council? We're vexed in this city. We voted for you because you said you wanted to do right by this city. And we're all here tonight because you're not honoring that promise. I told you last city council meeting, that if you can shoot me a eighty percent increase of beautifying this city, clap it up for the eighty percent. Still wait and see. I had the opportunity to express how I felt to one of the council members. That I will, I will allow to be re, remain no name right now. And I expressed the vexation of my soul to that council member. And I have a feeling that if you don't do right by this city, it's gonna be a great purging. It's gonna be a great purging, because if we can impeach you, we gonna work on it. We gonna work on impeaching every one of you who think that what you're doing is fair on the backs of these people. Don't do this city council. Don't vex us any further. I got my tax bill the other day, eight thousand dollars.
Mine is not alone, mine is eighty-one. Eighty-one.
Eight thousand dollars in taxes I'm paying. For a property that's the size of this here. Thank you, Ben. I'll see y'all in a few moments.
Anyone else on agenda items only?
Good evening, um, I wasn't gonna say anything. It was mentioned that we have public works equipment that's not operable here in the city. But sometime last week, I saw the prettiest. The prettiest, brand new.
Four or five of them.
Four or five.
Four, I only saw two.
I seen five.
And I almost ran off the road coming back from lunch. Silverado or Ford F-150. Pickup trucks. But we don't have any money. But we don't have any money. Right? You want a ten thousand dollar raise annually. Annually. But we don't have any money. You compare yourselves to other municipalities. We see the worth in that seeking. Northville.
Oh yeah.
A Carver Township.
Yes.
Right.
Atlantic City. Ocean City. We see that.
Bay's land.
An eight thousand dollar tax bill in this city is outrageous. It's sickening. But you want a ten thousand dollar raise. My question, my next question is, I was gonna hold it to the next portion. If you have jobs, if each of you have jobs, is your employer giving you a ten thousand dollar, uh, an eighty percent raise on your jobs? I'll save my other comments for the second half. But, um, I'm interested to see how many of you are gainfully employed. Because you're using Pleasantville as a cash cow. And it's not fair to the taxpayers.
Yes.
It's not fair. So I'll save my other comments for the second half. Thank you very much.
I wanna piggyback.
I wanna piggyback.
I'm sorry, you already came up to speed. So you can speak the next half, regular meeting.
I'm still on the same meeting.
You can speak on a regular meeting.
I'm sorry, I, I heard you say it.
I just wanna piggyback on stuff.
Can I get a motion to close the work session, I mean, public portion?
Motion, six.
All in favor? Can I get a motion to close the work session?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone have to go? Anyone else?
Well, we have open discussion.
No, anyone has to go for a reset.
No.
Okay, everyone say this. Alright. Good evening everyone. This is the council meeting of the city of Pleasantville. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city newspaper and conformists with the Open Public Meetings Act. Otherwise known as the Sunshine Law Roll Call. I'm sorry, application and flags. Roll Call, Madam Clerk, Madam Court.
Present.
Treblero.
Here.
Camona.
Yes.
Correa.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Ogusby.
Present.
Thomas.
Present.
All in attendance. Can I get a motion to dispense these previous minutes?
Motion, second.
All in favor? May there any presentations, proclamation?
I have nothing, thank you.
Madam Clerk. Okay, first is witness number one, public hearing required fixing the salaries of officials and employees of the city of Pleasantville. This is the public hearing. Anyone from the public would like to speak?
Now that you allow me to take the mic, okay? I'ma keep it brief.
Just say your name for the record, please.
My name is Wanda Haberham. Would you like calling this Pratt? And that's not my name.
Okay. Ms. Wanda. Just remember you're talking to us, Ms. Wanda.
I'm speaking to the people that.
No, they have to speak to us.
I need y'all to acknowledge this. Okay, because there's some things that is not right. And we all need to get on the same page to work at the same pace.
So Ms. Wanda speak to us.
These are the people that elected everyone. Now, there's only one person that was willing to tell us what their salary was, and that is Ms. Joanne over here. Everybody else stay quiet. Okay? This is public knowledge. Why can't we know why, what you making, so that we understand what you want the raise for? Because at the end of the day, we see poverty in Pleasantville. We see homelessness in Pleasantville. And we're not just talking about drug addicts. We're talking about families with children. Okay? We see empty abandoned buildings that actually need to be restored, rebuilt, so we can beautify Pleasantville and give them housing, low income housing. Okay? This is what we're seeing. So at the end of the day, if we're gonna all work together for one agenda, which is a true fact. We need to know why? Where is this money coming from? Okay? And then why do we have so many empty buildings that they could be used? So that we can get these families off of the street? Okay? I work a food bank. You know how many people I see over there? And I'm talking about seventy, eighty year olds. I'm talking about mothers with five to six kids. Okay? On a daily basis on Wednesdays. And Mr. King can agree to what I'm saying here. Okay? Cause we work this food bank. We feel sorry for those people. And it's sad. And we've been seeing this for the last six years. When are we gonna see a change, some improvement? Okay? And with all these people that retired, why can't we get them, get some people in there? Why do y'all have brand new vehicles, but you claim you don't have the money? If that's the case, then why'd you buy the city yard brand new trucks and stuff to ride around so they could just hang out and go to sleep down by New Jersey Transit bus stop? Knock on his door? And be like, yo man, what you doing? Why you sleeping? Why you not on your job? Who's, who's policing there? Cause I shorten up them bank going his window several times. Asking him why he hiding back there.
Thank you, Ms. Wanda.
So if we're gonna buy brand new trucks, I feel as if though that debt money should've went towards y'all raises. Now I'm gonna keep it real. Why give them something to ride around in and they ain't doing their job? They don't even clean the streets properly when the snow come.
Thank you, Ms. Wanda.
But yet they claim their contract ain't Main Street. But if you are the Pleasantville dag gone, um, municipal, you, Main Street is a part of your contract. It should be cleaned.
Thank you.
I know, you, you always say that to me. You don't never let me get my point across, no matter where you are.
Everyone's entitled to three minutes.
Yeah, but the bottom line is, the bottom line is, nobody else on the panel is saying anything. And there is more than one person on that panel. We need to hear from each and every one of y'all. Not just one.
Thank you, Ms. Wanda.
Only person that says something is Ms. Joanne. And this young lady right here, Ms. King. That is not right.
Okay.
That is not right. We voted y'all.
Ms. Wanda.
We got y'all, but we need y'all, we need y'all.
There is however, another public portion that you wanna do with that. But there's a three minute limit everyone, please, let's apply by that. Public hearing, next come up, please state your name, resident limits.
Good evening everyone again. Tim Jones, Pleasantville, Kansas City, Pleasantville, New Jersey. I would like to dovetail off of what Ms. Haberham just said. I mean, she makes a very valid point. This is a public hearing on this waters matter. And you open it up to hear from us, we have plenty to say.
Oh yes.
I would like to hear from what you have to say. What justifies this, this ten thousand dollar raise individually in, in your minds? Let us hear from you. So hear it, let us hear from you, I appreciate that.
Yes. Anyone else? And unless you're gonna donate it to the fire department.
My name is Anna Quinlan. And I just wanted to say one thing. Is that you guys all ran for office. I don't know what your intention was, but it was, what mine would understand is, is to be, you were elected for whatever we have, is to serve the, the public of Pleasantville. And at that time when you ran, you knew what your salaries were. So if you weren't really interested in, you know, working for Pleasantville residents, then you shouldn't have ran for office. Okay? Because you can't run, you know, you get in and then all of a sudden you hear. Okay, because you can't run, you know, you get in, and then all of a sudden you hear you have to get a, you have to get a raise. You're supposed to be public servants, if I'm, if that's what I'm understanding. You're here to work for the public, to make sure that the City of Pleasantville is not suffering. And I am a senior citizen, and I still have to work, every day. Because I can't afford the taxes or your sewer bill and everything else if I just set on my social security check. It's a lot of seniors are here, and the City of Pleasantville keeps saying this to you, the City of Pleasantville, it, the mainstay here is the senior citizens. And I've heard someone say the senior citizens have, um, real estate tax freeze. Mine isn't, because mine showing, my real estate tax is great thousand dollars. So I don't know where the, the freeze is at, but y'all forgot to give it to me. So I just wanna say, if you don't wanna be public servants, then you shouldn't be up here. This is not the job for you. You need to get another job outside where you can get all this kind of money. But this City of Pleasantville, we can handle it. Thank you.
Good evening. My fellow, we have 1301 Broad Street, Pleasantville, New Jersey. This ordinance number one says it is for employees of, of the city. What employees of the city does this raise include? Are you saying you guys and councilmen are employees of the city? That's what it says. Says fixing the salaries of officials and employees of the city. What employees of the city are you also included?
So everybody's gonna see a 10,000 dollar?
Why is it, and, and you know, it, it makes people frustrated when they ask the question and they cannot get an answer. You know, where there's unity, there is strength.
Right.
Where there's disunity, there is discord.
That's right.
So you get the discord, and you get the frustration and the feedback, because you don't even unify to answer a question.
Ms. Marbella, earlier, there was employees that wasn't included in this. There was, you know, about salaries for the, um, I guess it just wasn't taken out?
So then the ordinance is not written correctly if it wasn't taken out?
No, it doesn't affect any, may I change?
Yes.
It doesn't affect any employees. It is a default salary ordinance, and that is the title. However, the explanation explains who is being affected. So that is a default ordinance by statute. However, it is not affecting employees.
Okay. So where is the money coming from in order for you all to get this raise? And also, where's the money coming from? Hold on, y'all. Hold on, please. I asked the question. Also, when was the last time that the mayor got a raise?
When everyone else did, and that was about. It's been a long time ago, about, uh, twenty sixteen.
That was the last time you got a raise?
And that math salary, uh, mayor and council always gets in at the same time.
Okay, okay. Where is the money going to come from?
Thank you. Taxes.
I don't understand.
Are they not allowed to give the city fair or answer any question? Excuse me?
You say I have three minutes, but you're, you're saying my time is up, okay? And all for respect, in my, in my first couple of thirty seconds, I asked the question. And I've asked the question three times, and I think it's very disrespectful that you don't answer the question. When, when, when you were raised, when your parents asked you something, you responded with respect. I have no respect here. This is total disrespect, because you don't wanna answer.
I'm gonna ask our, um, CFO if he can answer that question.
Why, yeah?
No.
No, no.
No.
Y'all, 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 it, for me, it just goes to show, you're sitting up here, you really don't know what's going on. Where though he has to answer the question, where the money is gonna come from? You should have some type of knowledge to be able to answer the question.
Down the outside. Down the outside.
Just so you know, the money comes from whatever we do, whatever we utilities, everything that we pay, pay for, for the city, comes from the taxes. We do have, we do have like two million dollars from state, from federal, from state grants, but the majority of the money is raised by taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, and, and I'm sorry, you said my three minutes was up, but if you would've gave me that answer a long time ago, I wouldn't have this question for you now. So how do y'all feel that we're paying for your increase, and we can't even really live in Pleasantville? My mortgage went up $300.
They don't care.
They don't care.
Excuse me, Gary, can you explain the kind of funniness we have coming in as well?
No. No.
It's coming in, it's coming in for the city, not for your body.
He wasn't voted in, we voted y'all in. So why is he embarrassed that he answered? We want the answers from the board. We voted y'all councilmen in. We voted y'all in.
To be honest, we don't wanna hear from you.
No.
No.
We don't wanna hear from you.
Excuse me?
You cannot call yourself a councilman.
Well, excuse me.
In this little dog, you're a few.
Get out of order, Mr. King.
You.
You are out of order.
You are respectful.
You are out of order.
We don't wanna hear from them.
But, excuse me.
Anytime y'all get asked.
It doesn't matter. You are out of order, Mr. King.
Don't be respectful.
No, Mr. King, please have a seat, because you are out of order.
You defer to him or the attorney.
You are out of order.
Y'all gonna answer the question.
Excuse me, you are out of order.
Can you tell?
Listen, listen, this is about this, Mr. King, please have a seat.
We don't wanna hear from them. We wanna hear from you.
We voted y'all in.
Anytime you have a difficult question, you defer to the attorney or to him. We wanna hear from you. And if you don't know, you don't need to be up there.
Please don't be up there.
We don't wanna hear from you.
We do have money coming in here, approximately a hundred thousand dollar from cannabis. The reason we have, we have two over two million dollars come from the stadium. We have other revenue comes in also, cannabis, construction costs, and other things. But again.
It comes over the back of the tax papers.
Does that mean that taxes aren't gonna go up anymore?
Excuse me. Anyone else want a public hearing? I know you said my three minutes was over.
Excuse me, there. But I say this, and I'mma say this in love, y'all need to examine what you're here for, and what you're doing for the people. You are not representing the people if you cannot answer the people's question. That's just plain and simple. You have no knowledge. And the word of God says, "My people perish because of lack of knowledge."
How you doing, my name is Boris Smith. Few minutes ago, y'all got up here, y'all quoted Psalms 23.
Use the mic, hear you.
Use the mic.
Few minutes ago, y'all got up here and y'all quoted Psalms 23.
Speak it.
Lord's Prayer. Lord's Prayer. How can you sit up here and quote the Lord's Prayer?
Right.
And y'all robbing the people. Y'all robbing the people. Y'all got elderly people out here asking y'all questions. Out of respect for them, they get to ask him. They ask you, 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 and you. Why not ask their question? If you don't know, just say you don't know. Don't sit up there and look stupid. Most of y'all probably don't even live in Pleasantville. I know you do, I know you do. I seen you around, never seen the rest of y'all. I live right down the street from you. Like, respect the people. They asking y'all questions. Answer their questions. Out of respect. Everybody sitting there, this one on the phone, you on the phone, like, respect the people. That's all. That's all they asking is respect. Because these is the people that y'all gonna see when y'all walk out the door. They put y'all up there.
Yes.
Sure enough.
Sure enough.
They pay y'all. So give them some respect. We already know this is just cosmetics. Y'all gonna get the money regardless. Trust me, they gonna get it.
Not anyways.
Believe it. You can believe, you can sit there and think that they not gonna get it, this is cosmetics, so that y'all can have what y'all wanna say. I'm only, I only got up here because I don't like how y'all being disrespectful to some of these elderly people. Seventy-five years old, working. Seventy-something years old, cleaning her own gutters in the streets. But you wanna raise. These jokers around here driving hundred-thousand-dollar trucks.
That they not use.
Out there right down the street from the mayor, and I can count on my hands how many times they come down the street and make sure that the street is clean when it's snowing. Make sure that the gutters is clean when they flood. One is right on the corner of my house. Guess what? When it floods, it's me out there cleaning. Not the city.
Excuse me, so with all due respect, are you saying they demand more?
Nah, they don't.
Oh, oh, okay, I was gonna say, I don't mind not anymore.
They need, they need, they need to do it more, out of respect for the mayor, but I, you know.
Okay, I just wanna clear that up.
These people's asking y'all questions about stuff that they wanna know. If you don't know, just say you don't know. Don't revert it to this man. He, he lost. Yeah, he lost, because y'all putting him on the spot.
Uh, Congressman Harmon.
Mr. Harmon, just to tell them we still in the hearing phase.
We said, do you?
We still in the hearing, ordinance number one.
Yeah.
I want you to look microphone's on. Use the microphone.
I was gonna speak loud and fast because I know your time limit, and I don't wanna break the law. Do you mean, don't start my time until I. I have, uh, a couple of commendations, uh, of great things that, uh, our women, Ms. Police, has done. And I think it's appropriate that you see. Uh, number one was the continued work of that police department. How I see them, as a boulevard, yes, is a location where they do a job, and they are writing tickets. That's commendable.
Mr. Harmon, I'm sorry, this is just for the ordinance. Ordinance number one, this is the public hearing.
I can't.
No.
You can't.
Okay, so when do I get to?
Public portion.
Public.
This is the ordinance.
This is the hearing for the ordinance, number one.
November the sixth, uh, ordinance number twenty-five. Spoke to what is taking place tonight. I saw it, and I had it set where you were sitting. I said, "This must be a test, okay?" Now, as you sit there, and some of you have to take everything they say tonight, but you're not in favor of this, that I know. Because I know you, and I know your concerns, and I know when you ran your election, you ran to serve Pleasantville and not to make a council seat a full-time job. A councilman doesn't even have a office. A councilman doesn't even have a secretary. You are a public servant.
Yes.
And I know, like I said, some of you, I love all of you, I think we have now one of the greatest teams ever. And I didn't see seventeen telephone calls, two medicines in those groups. So you have tested your community with an eighty percent raise. Nowhere in this country have any one of you can speak to eighty percent. We get ten to say raise that high.
No, we don't.
Not eighty. So I, I stand before you, I know that this is a test, councilperson. And as you vote tonight, you will be a council. Now, those of you that vote for this, do not contemplate of being sitting there next year.
And the processing has been spoken.
I do want to say, and I'll take my seat, I'll take my seat, my good councilperson. This is a test, okay? I think, I want to, Madam Kirk, you wrote twenty-one resolutions. And I counted them, that's a lot of work, along with my city, city administrator, and then the paper. I say to commend you guys in support of our mayor, okay, Mr. Judith Warren. Your town, we used to come back in the day, Tuesdays, the second and the fourth, for work sessions. A few years ago, it was changed. Now you come out twice a month, that's all. And you get some telephone calls, that's the job. But a council seat is not a J O B. We can't give on that. Now, the ten percent, again, I said, I know it was a test. And some of you say that, don't believe that, and of course, you're gonna vote tonight. So I, I applaud you for your efforts. Continue, give good word on this table advancing, because I asked for it to come blessed, but we're gonna work on that, okay? So we can see all of you. But, uh, I know when you're going to, I can't call if you need, but I won't do it who does not support an eighty percent raise. We have almost two hundred employees, and if you take a raise, where do you think they want? So keep up the good work. Alyssa Aubrey, welcome to council. I didn't get an opportunity. And you guys, keep doing what you're doing, and Pleasantville is gonna be alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. And that was very heartfelt, being that you were a councilperson yourself.
Forty-nine years.
Thank you. Forty-nine years and you never got a raise?
Right.
Forty-nine-year veteran on the council. Mr. Obusby, how long you been on the?
I just got elected, that's fine.
You just started? I'm not, I'm just asking. Okay, so I'm just asking, because this man served forty-nine years. You've been on for a couple meetings. And now you wanna vote for real, you're conscious, for a $10,000 raise? Ordinance number one is what I'm addressing. A $10,000 increase, eighty percent. So right now, what you make is about $500 a council meeting. A thousand dollars a month. You meet twice a month with us and a couple times during. A thousand dollars a month, you meet twice a month with us, and a couple times during... Where is the money coming from again? I'm sorry, I got mixed up. So wait a minute, you're voting to give yourselves a eighty percent increase without asking us? I just heard the man say, it's coming from my taxes. So that means I'm paying you. And when I did the evaluation? Two, three percent at best, some of you not. And when I say not, I mean the people that just got there, they ain't even proved themselves. Only thing they proved was they were at the meeting. Come on, councilpeople. This is no stretch of the imagination that this is your full-time or part-time job. You were voted to serve. I'm telling you the truth, if Jesus did this right here, a servant, gonna turn around and charge us for dining? Y'all must be under a gag order. And I'm not trying to be funny, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, just like I told the councilperson I spoke to the other night, I am vexed beyond measure. I'm so vexed, that you don't even understand what you're doing to the people that live in the city that you chose to serve. But don't have secret, secret counsel, and pull up some false information about other neighboring cities. And you have not produced nowhere near that. Don't do this. I told that councilperson that I was vexed, but I tell you what, and I mean this from the death of my soul, if you vote for this, we gonna vote you out. And we are going to remember, we're gonna remember what you did and what you didn't do. Because not only are we responsible for what we say, we're responsible for what we don't say. And when you didn't answer us up here, and you pointed to somebody that we didn't elect, you're telling us that our voice means nothing. And when you try to hush me up, you're a problem now.
Yes, Mr. Carrington, you're talented.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Oberly, don't vote for this servant. You've only been here for a few minutes. You can't in your right conscious vote for something like this.
Mr. Carrington, your time's up.
All the others who only been here for a couple years, Mr. Mr. Harmon served for forty-nine years. I know it is, and your time is up too.
Good evening, council, my name is Maxine Christmas, I live at seven-two-zero-NuMeFor Road. And I've been here since nineteen-seventy-two, I know all of you, and I voted for the ones that are in my district. My husband, William Christmas, shortly after we came to this town, was asked to serve on the Board of Education by David Lakens. He served on that board with not a penny in his pocket, for eighteen years, and he enjoyed every day of it. He got elected, and the people, they were really sorry to see him when he got off the board. Then he said, I'm gonna, maybe go run for city council, and he did that, and he stayed for twelve years, and he didn't ask for another penny over what he was making. But for the Board of Education, he didn't make a dime, they served free. And Tony, you know, Carla, you know, I don't know, I don't remember if you, Mr. Barclay?
Yeah.
No.
But, oh, yes, Joanne, I'm sorry. But to ask for a ten thousand dollar raise, that is somebody's salary, that's a job. You are on the board to serve the people, not for them to serve you. And as long as I lived in this town, I have complained about the streets being as dirty as they are. We used to have streets, uh, streets, I haven't seen them, I don't know when, he left and went down South Fire, I understand, and he wasn't ever replacing me. But you need, I'm gonna tell you right now, don't come looking for my vote if you vote for this.
I know that.
I'm not voting for you, you should be ashamed of yourself if you did.
What we're talking about, okay, because this gentleman over here spoke that this money's coming from the taxpayers. So that means that the three, our three people, our three people, our three people that is on council, that they live in Pleasantville, is that money coming out of your taxpayer money? That's what I wanna know, seriously, if we gonna take the money from the taxpayers, like he said, we know three of y'all, and you were my neighbor.
Ms. Wanda, you already spoke.
I need to know, is that money coming out of your taxpayer money, for your own raise? And not from us, from your tax money?
Then he gonna answer that?
No, he not, they gonna tell me to go sit down, and they gonna sit there, and they gonna talk back and forth amongst each other, which is rude and disrespectful.
Okay, uh, for twenty-seven years, I coached for the Pleasantville Jokers, alright, twenty-seven years, okay? The life of a head coach, assistant coach, in Pleasantville, I'm not talking about coaches, pretend football coaches, okay? Nothing against the cheerleading coaches, alright, but from July to November, seven days a week, we're coaching. Seven days a week. That's a job within itself, that's an extra eight hours, between game planning, league meetings, organization meetings, conditioning, and fundraising. Am I missing something?
No.
Right?
Time, practice.
Dealing with the parents, dealing with the parents, dealing with the children, and we're often called, we're often called to the schools, to the schools, because, one, two, some of our ballplayers have, uh, less than desirable classroom conduct, okay? Seven days a week. We never got paid, never got paid. We are true servants, true servants of this community. Now, how many meetings do you guys attend, weekly, monthly, daily? The life of a football, a junior league football coach is seven days a week. And the most we get? For appreciation, and it's not out of any disrespect, but it's what we can do, what our organization can do, is a hot dog and a cup of soda. And you want a ten thousand dollar raise for not doing a third of what we do on a weekly basis? It's not fair, it's not fair at all. The next thing I wanna say, character and integrity go a long way. It proves who you are, as a man and as a woman, especially if you profess the name of Jesus. You've lost my respect. I can come back, right?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm not done. Character and integrity, when everybody else doesn't wanna stand up, fails to stand up, at least, those who profess should stand up for righteousness. I can teach you, cause you knows nothing.
Anyone else for the public hearing? Mr. Christmas, you already spoke. I got one more thing to say. Along with Mr. Christmas, serving on the board, serving on council, he coached little league ball, for how many years?
Ten, twelve.
And didn't get a dime.
That's my girl. Good evening. Did you turn this thing off? No, good evening, I deliberately waited and tried to be last. I did that deliberately, a lot of it I don't have to repeat. Tonight is your turn, your night to shine, this is your night. You've come before the citizens and said, we need to sell the water company, I mean, sell to the water company, because we need some money. You came before the citizens and said, we need to sell the sewage system, we need some money. Now, you've come before the city council, I mean, council comes before the citizens, and says, we want some more money from you. Now's your turn to stand up tonight, really it is. When we dealt with the issue of the abatement for the new apartments, few of the couple of council people held back and said, we need to table this. This is your night to shine. If any of you are on the table, thinking back and forth, maybe, 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 this is your night to shine. Oh, I forgot, I almost put in as much as him, my little league goes over him, but I had put in forty-four years, between school board, council, and planning board. So I, I should get a minute or two more than he did. But I repeat, this is your night to shine. You, you have, I'd like to see two different decisions, point one, two. One that you say, maybe we need to go and take another look at this. I don't think anybody in this room really feels you shouldn't get anything, and I haven't talked to them, is the amount of the increase. And the other thing, just turn it down. That's the two choices I see. Just turn it down. And I guess I'm speaking to those, and I'm not mentioning names, that I think is on the fence up there. You need to really think. The public has really talked to you tonight, it's time for you to shine, and show them where you come from, thank you.
Marvin Royal, thirteen hundred, I feel bad again. I guess you, you've heard tonight, right, and saying all the reasons why not to consider. I guess you've heard tonight, why not to consider the proposal that you put before us. We've, you know, told you, we've voiced to you, right, our objection to this manner, right, and saying of, of negotiation, self-negotiation, this manner of monies, where it's, where it's gonna come from, and who's gonna pay it. We've talked to you about, not just the financial harm, but the physical harm to some of our households. What you're doing and what you're proposing, right, and saying, is ludicrous. I come from a union background, as I've told you time and time again, and before we can even start to talk about monies, right, we have to find out whether or not, right, and saying, a person can pay the money that we're asking for. No one can in this room can afford a ten thousand dollar, ninety, eighty percent increase in salary. This country's not even built like that. The government right now, right, and saying, we're trying to just start, uh, fun two wars, we're trying to do all these different things, right, and saying, including on the border, adding new things, right, and saying, so a person can come into the country legally, all of these things. And you folks, some of you folks, these Bible, right, you've come up, right, and saying, with this idea of a ten thousand dollar raise. Well, they have asked you, well, what are you gonna do to earn the money, or what have you done? You got two council persons, right, in here, with over ninety-three years of service, forty-four and forty-nine, you know, they didn't get that money, they never even came to us for that money.
That's right.
Because the bottom line, right, and saying, you know, is that it's our service. You take an oath of office, and the oath of office is saying that you are not to benefit from anything that you do or the decision that you make, that's what it says. And if you don't know it, then read it again. You know, it, it, it disturbs, right, and saying, it disturbs, it would disturb anyone to know the harm that you're gonna try to do to the city. We can't afford, right, a two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar increase, right, and saying, in, you know, on, on the annual budget for the city, we can't do it, we're a full-service city. We have the police here, right, and they're doing a good job, we have the fire department, you know, and if you're not doing that, then with the job, when the last time have you heard, right, and saying, you know, buildings burning down? You got good public service, so how are you gonna pay these employees? And when they come to you and ask you for a twenty percent raise, how are you gonna pay them? Cause they're gonna turn around and ask you for it, based on what you're, what you're asking us for. I'm telling you to shut it down, shut it down, it's the only reasonable, right, and saying, fair and equitable thing to do. Because what you do that's questionable to us, right, what you do that's self-serving to us, right, there are laws on this books, right, and saying, that talks about behaviors such as this. Please don't go down that road, I've seen it done before, I've seen it done before. And I'm not talking about some hypothetical, I've seen it done before in this city, right, and people pay prices. Don't you folks, right, and saying, follow, right, on self-serving, you know, decisions, right, that then turn around and diminish, right, the living capabilities of each and every person in this room, outside this room, and that walks and live on these streets.
First of all, let me apologize, Madam President, for my outburst earlier. That's very uncharacteristic of me, but it's outgrowth of frustration, and many people here feel the same. All those documents downtown that you guys swore an oath to, they all say, we the people, we the people, we the people. It didn't say we the council, it didn't say we the mayor, didn't say we the president or the council, didn't say we the union rep, or we're the financial rep, it says we the people. And you swore an oath to protect and defend that constitution, and to faithfully execute the duties of that office, on behalf of we the people. But it also says that when the government ceases to be of the people, for the people, and by the people, it says it's our duty to destroy or abolish that government, isn't that interesting? Nobody reads that second part, but it says, when you cease to do what the people want, that it's our duty to move you up out of those seats. And I don't know if you realize it, like, you're on the verge, like, making this type of move, that I guess you feel like you can get away with, cause there's so many lethargic people in this city, city of twenty thousand, only three hundred vote, I guess you figure you can get away with it? I guess you figure you can get away with it? I don't know, maybe, maybe not. But at the end of the day, you're setting yourself up for like a small January sixth here. And we're not violent. We're not violent. We're trying to be reasonable. We're coming to you, talking to you over and over and over again. But every man and every woman has a breaking point. I haven't forgotten anything the Marine Corps taught me. I know this army officer hadn't either. He also served like twenty-six years in the army. We need to, that man right there may need to be up on a plaque somewhere. But anyway, you don't realize what you're setting yourself up for. That outburst was just a frustration of what everybody in here is feeling. Because to be disrespected, an elder who asks you a question, you can't. Man, if you didn't answer your other, you got slapped. That's crazy to me. So the only thing I want to know is, like, I know the fire department has issues. If we're going to spend eighty thousand dollars, let's deal with that mold remediation that the fire department had. I was a fireman. That's near and dear to my heart. Them firemen putting their lives on the line, breathing, black mold will kill you. Like, if we just go drop eighty thousand dollars, let's start with our public servants. I went and burned buildings. Are you willing to go and burn a building? Most guys do. They are. If we're going to drop eighty thousand, let's put it over there. And forget about yourselves for a minute.
Ask that you are for us. Explain yourself, defend yourself. That's what we asking. Why do you deserve ten grand increase? Let us know. Why do you deserve ten thousand? Why do you deserve ten thousand? Because your head been down the whole time. Just interesting. Why do you deserve ten thousand? Explain that to me. Explain to the people that vote for you. Why do you deserve ten thousand, Mr. Farley? Why do you deserve ten thousand, Mr. Corley? I'm just saying, the people are speaking. Answer us. Why do you all deserve a ten thousand dollar increase? Based on what? Y'all come through this city every day and y'all know it. And nobody's answering anything. So why have these open, public meetings and y'all gonna defend yourselves? Why? We voted for you for what? To leave? To make this better, the city better? Am I answering for you? Okay. Why did you want it? Why did you want it?
Because I care about this city.
Okay, this is what we want to give y'all? For two and a half hours? For two and a half hours? I'm going to wait for somebody to speak up and say, we got y'all back. But no, we're not giving y'all, we're not giving y'all ten thousand dollar increase. There has been no approvals in this city. That's asinine, asinine. Do better, be better, act like y'all for us instead of lining y'all pockets. For what? People are going to the streets begging. You don't see that in Moorefield, Summers Point, Lynnwood? They drop them here in the village. And it's disgusting. You can never go to Summers Point and see the traffic that's here in Pleasantville. Never. Never. Because they'll bring them right back here. They got the crack house there to give them their pills for eight hours and they zooming this city begging for money. They in the traffic on Main Street. In the cars.
They're at the Wawa's, plus they believe.
They think everybody in here just want to hear what y'all got to say. Don't get up nobody. Let them have the floor. Defend yourselves. Are you for the people? Are you for the people? Okay, then defend yourself. Speak. We need to hear from y'all. And you know what? That's all you've been saying all night. I need you to say something else, girl. Please. I need you to say something else. You know what I'm saying? Come on, I need you to say something else. I need you, I need to hear an agenda. I need to hear something else. You know what I mean? I need to hear from all of y'all. Thank you, I'm done.
I just want to say, and I don't want any applause.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Wanda.
I just want to say to everyone, I don't want any applause.
Ms. Wanda, you already spoke. Ms. Wanda, please.
I just want to say to everyone, I don't want any applause, comments, or anything from anyone, if you don't mind. But I just want to say to you all, I don't, I'm going to be straight out. I am not in agreement with the race. And it's not because I don't think that we deserve it. Council deserves it. But it's just that the timing is bad. The timing is bad. And the distress that our city is in, I just don't think it's anything. And this is, I'm saying this now, and I'm not doing, this is not about votes. This is not about popularity or any of that. Because I've said to council a couple of times how I felt about this. So it's not as if, you know, as if I'm being insensitive. I'm sitting up here saying nothing also because rather than throw anybody completely under a bus or anything, and I'm in this mix, I'm in the mix with everyone else. I just want you all to know, it's not the feeling of all of us. And if, you know, we've talked about it over and over, I don't know how much more we can say to get a different point across. At this point, I, I mean,
It's very disappointing. Neither of these officials has spoken and defended themselves.
It's disappointing. We've been here for over two hours.
But what more is it that we can say? I mean, what more?
I'm talking about the people. The people have said it. We waiting for them.
At what point do they even respond to the questions that's being put in?
The whole thing is, I watched Mr. Victor walk Main Street, Carla walk Main Street, Mr. Thompson walk Main Street.
Anyone else for Ms. Wanda? Ms. Wanda?
We still in a public hearing.
We need to hear from y'all. Y'all know what the problem is. We need to hear from you. We see you walking the street. We need to hear it from you.
Anyone else for public hearing?
Mona Tally, Furwood Avenue. So we have, as she said, two and a half hours. We've asked a lot of questions. A lot of questions have been put out here. My only question is, when do we get answers to our questions?
Well, I would like to speak, this is what I was told, right? When we have questions, that they're supposed to give them to the clerk and then write. The last meeting, I thought we were supposed to have written questions.
That's for y'all. That's for us.
Thank you, Mr. Olguers.
Hold on one second. I'm not the, hold on one second. So when I'm hearing a question for the first time, if I don't personally have a response to it, then I write it down, like, tonight when I get my terms figured on, then I'm going to address what was said at the last meeting that I'm going to concern for the last one. Because I was able to check into that. So tonight's question, I couldn't answer, you know, so I decided to write them down. I checked them out, and I responded back to them. But that's the only way I can do it. I'm not going to say nothing that I don't know.
So again, I, when we ask the questions, when should we expect answers? So nobody sees it. Like, that's ignorant, ignorant stuff. I'm going to say stuff because I was going to say something else.
When do we get answers? I think it's a great question. In a case like this, most of the time I've seen the answers will be reflected on the vote. That's the way I look at it.
Say that again, come again?
Like, I know you're looking for answers to certain questions. But this is a hearing. We want to hear all voices. We want to hear everything. We want to hear all the questions and so on. And I'm pretty sure the answer that you're looking for should be reflected on the vote of the audience. That's what I'm hoping for.
That sounds good. That's politically correct. That is politically correct. I appreciate you. I'm serious. I'm so, I'm, as an educated woman, I'm not even going to stand here brave about what I do have. But I'm intelligent enough to know when people approach you and have a question, the answer's not just in the vote. What are y'all feelings about your people? You guys represent us. We're taxpayers here in Pleasantville, Texas. Okay? I'm not going to beat y'all with a dead horse because they already said all of that, that y'all work for us. And please believe, there are stressful numbers. Y'all don't have to answer us today. But they'll always be in June, and they'll always be in November. Okay? Since you guys can't respect us, the ones that's going to pay your ten thousand dollars, right? We'll do y'all the favor and wait till June and November. Right? I know I personally carry a nice voting block. Me personally, I don't even have to stand with PCC. But along with PCC, my number's probably quadruple. But I do have a nice voting block. And I do have a very big following. So I don't have a problem doing what I got to do. Because not only do I pay taxes, I got elderly, I don't have to pay taxes in Pleasantville, I got elderly father that pay taxes in Pleasantville. And if I don't do anything else, I'm going to speak for them when they can't speak for themselves. But the very least that you guys could do is respect us enough to give us some kind of response somewhere at some point. I don't want to know the vote. Communicate with us. Communication is two ways. It's not just a vote. I appreciate your response, but it's not just a vote. It's more than that. But we deserve more than that.
It's me again.
We need Ms. Wanda to say something.
Everybody needs a raise at some time or another, especially with the way that inflation is now. But if you have that kind of money to give each individual, you need to put some money into the city. So you need to clean it up, clean the city up. Hire some more people in public works perhaps. Get the street cleaner going. And it can't go without a person evidently being hired because it hasn't been running. But the amount that you're asking for is just, it's too much. It's too much. And sooner or later, then our taxes are going to go up even more. You can't afford any more. I work quite time as it is to take care of everything that I have to take care of at my tender young age. Because social security doesn't cut it. Okay? Does not cut it. So you need to think about all that. Hit this place cleaned up, you know, you could look better in a better way to get any kind of a raise. Really. Okay?
Can I read something? Anyone else? For public hearing? See, anyone? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Stand up? Motion for roll call? Can I get a second for roll call? Okay. Roll call board is number one, Davenport. Bemelaro?
I feel very bad for the people out there that don't get answers to the questions that they're putting.
Well, can you give us a mic?
Everybody deserves an answer. Everybody knows where I stand on this issue. Ten thousand dollars is incomprehensible. It's not ten thousand dollars, it's eighty percent. Nobody gets an eighty percent raise. I don't care who you are. Nobody gets an eighty percent raise. I'm not even so sure that, never mind. I just think that, I can't even say, let's table this and do it at a later date because we're just kicking the can down the road. So my vote is no.
Colonna?
Yes.
Korea?
No. I requested to speak before I vote. And I keep well prepared to vote for this on this. I don't make my decision and take it lightly.
We're not going to take it lightly either.
Man, can I have a vote, please? I took the oath to serve people. And I took the oath to take care of people that deserve rewards. What happened to me tonight when the CFO came and said, this money will come from taxes? That is my only problem. Now, I can determine to vote for this. But my understanding is there's some money coming that this money, that will cover this money. And it's not the case. So I feel compelled. And I know I was disappointing a lot of people because I made up my mind. But if it's not, if it's coming from the taxes, then it put me in the chokehold. I will know. Well, I'm going to make my vote, but I didn't appreciate that someone told me what I should and shouldn't do. But my eyes are open and I know this is, my tough call coming in here new, but if I want to be reamed out either way, I do. So that's what I do. I gotta go now.
Order, please. Nexus ordinance number two, first reading, exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap. Motion?
Motion, second.
Any questions? All in favor? I'm not sorry. Davenport?
Yes.
Bemelaro? Colonna?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olguersby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Ordinance moved to second reading, scheduled for February twenty-first. Resolution twenty-two authorizing the fiscal year of 2024 local recreation improvement grant application funded by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Can I get a motion?
Motion, second.
Roll call, please. Davenport?
Yes.
Bemelaro?
Yes.
Colonna?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olguersby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution twenty-three, amended the agreement between the city and the county of Atlantic for the installation and maintenance of flashing signal equipment at various locations.
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Davenport?
Yes.
Bemelaro?
Yes.
Colonna?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olguersby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution twenty-four, authorizing the tax collector to cancel and refund property charges.
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion, I mean, roll call, please. Davenport?
Yes.
Bemelaro?
Yes.
Colonna?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olguersby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution approved. Resolution 25, endorsing in support of the New Jersey Department of Transportation closure of Decatur Avenue.
Motion.
Second please.
Second.
Roll call. Davenport?
Yes.
Femalero?
Yes.
Colonna?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Augustby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 26, authorizing the implementation of a corrective action plan for the 2022 city's audit.
Motion. Second.
Roll call please. Davenport?
Yes.
Femalero?
Yes.
Colonna?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Augustby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 27, authorizing the execution of an amended agreement of sale and amended and restated redevelopment agreement with Savage Collaborations LLC regarding the Palcoing Avenue redevelopment plan. Motion please.
Motion. Second.
Roll call. Davenport?
Yes.
Femalero?
Yes.
Colonna?
Yes.
Korea?
No.
So noted? Barclay?
Yes.
Augustby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. I need a motion to approve the bill list.
Motion. Second.
Roll call. Davenport?
Yes.
Femalero?
Yes to all except 66666.
Colonna?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Tom, Augustby?
Yes to everything except 66666.
So noted? Thomas? Yes to everything but 66666. So noted as well. I need a motion to approve. Rock watch. Motion. Second. Roll call. Davenport?
Yes.
Femalero?
Yes.
Colonna?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Augustby? Thomas?
Yes.
Motion approved. Nexus public portion. If you'd like to speak, please, uh, state right to me. Who did? Who did? With the bottom? Okay, with the show calling it in. Yeah. Okay, very well. Public portion. First we had Jose Alatama. Tim Jones. Jerry King. Linda Carrington. Ms. Anna Katana. Mr. Harmon. Don't you miss the Harmon.
President Harmon, South Texas.
Quiet, please.
I didn't quite finish earlier. I would ask for, you know, turn. But I tell you what. Tonight, you have said to the world, not USA. Those of you that are assembled right now. You have responded to the people. During the whole process, I knew that some of you were not ready for that. And I'm not standing here saying no, but the timing is just so bad. We broke ground at the yacht basin, thanks to our dear mayor. And Southern Pleasantville is gonna become one of the finest. We're talking about Baltimore Harbor. We're talking about networking across that open to many cities. Now, those of you there, have you voted right tonight? Relax, because we're gonna be with you. I got 17 calls and two ministers. I had to take my phone off. I've cut it off. And my daughter came home from Washington, said, "Daddy, don't do that." And my phone is back working. But again, thank you, guys. Thank you for listening. And we love Pleasantville. And we have an opportunity together. The words of our president, Joe Biden. I spoke there because I like the guy. He said, "Together, we can move mountains." Mayor, I know you wasn't in favor of this, and I won't, I'm not going down the line. But I thank you, guys. Just to table this, we want you compensated, but the timing is just so bad. Let's let the yacht basin work. The car wash is there. And get that Red Cross building ready. We're gonna be all right. Thank you. And God bless you all. I love you, guys, because you were the bravest leaders.
David Carrington?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for hearing my vexation. Now I can breathe. I have another issue, though, on the table. We have a large influx of Haitians and Dominicans coming into the community in light of the governor of Texas sending them out by force on buses. So now we have this large influx of Haitians and Dominicans that's coming into, students are coming into our schools, but we don't have a facility to teach the parents English. If we can't teach them English, we're gonna end up taking care of them because they don't have a skill to get a job. We used to have, in the district, funding for English as a second language. And those parents were afforded to come to go to that program for free and even have daycare provided for them for free. But we don't have that anymore. So we need a person from council, or two people, to partner with the Pleasantville Board of Education to understand the dynamics of these populations that's moving into our city so that we can be better equipped to serve them so they can turn back around and invest in our city. We don't want the burden. Because a lot of them have dropped off in New York. As you know, if you look at the news, they've dropped off in New York, but a lot of them are traveling south. They're trying to find more affordable living, so they're stopping here. And we have a lot of them. So far, we, I think, we, just at North Main Street School alone, we already have eight students. Not to talk about how many is in a family. There, a lot of them are living in two and three families in one home because they do not have the means or the communication skills to communicate what it is that they need. So they're housing themselves in two and three families. So we do need liaisons from the council to partner with the Board of Education so that we can educate these people and help educate their students. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Carrington? One minute, please. I want to address the issue that you brought to the floor. That's one of the most positive things I've heard about immigrants in this country coming from Pleasantville resident. You didn't say I hate them. You still want to help them to become more productive. I want to commit myself to that process so that we can work together and see how we can help them. And my colleague here wants to join as well. So please make the contact so that we can follow up immediately.
Okay.
And get their help and see how we can make it a significantly better.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Linda took my spot.
Oh, yes, she did.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. So I'm gonna say this, and I'm not gonna back up off of this at all. The safety of our children during arrival and dismissal times at our elementary and middle school and high schools. All right, we need more police presence. I almost had the brick of a fight today between two parents. That's not my job. That's not my job. But because of the frustration of parking on East Avenue School, right now we have parents who are bypassing the crossing guards, right? When they put the sign, and she puts her sign up, we still have cars going through the crossing guard. And they're not considering the children. Only thing they wanna do is get to where they're going. All right, we need more of a police presence during arrival and dismissal. Yes.
You know, you seen the mayor's to come all down there in unification. And they're trying to straighten this thing out. So we've already set up a meeting with the superintendent, even though it's a little far off. We're gonna have another public safety meeting hopefully next week and try to deal with the situation because I understand what you're saying. We've been down there, we've tried to deal with it. Well, we're ready for the school to get back with us so that we can have a meeting.
Yeah, we've been down since Lebanon. And we've been dealing with this for the past 15 and plus years. The other thing is, I apologize for your decision, right, in regards to the rates, okay? But again, I'm for the youth, right? If we have $80,000, okay? Support the youth. All right? The Pleasantville Jokers are the biggest youth organization in the city, okay? And it was brought to my attention that last year, the Pleasantville Track Team out of the wreck had some difficulties with finances, all right? I can't remember what the situation was. It was probably transportation, or it was uniforms, equipment, or whatever, okay? Support the youth. At least support at least half of that $80,000, okay? Support the youth. Give the kids what they need before we have to pay for their destruction. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Wanda?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry to interrupt you. I'm sure you're fine. I'm glad you're still standing inside of the public office. Council, I really appreciate y'all today because, for one, I watch each and every one of y'all walk down Main Street. Y'all know the issues with Pleasantville. It's not like you don't. You know what I'm saying? The commonest of communication with us. You know what I'm saying? Y'all communicating with each other, okay? I see you. I see you out there. I know that you're looking at the issues. I know that you're discussing the issues. And we need to know how you feel about the issues. Now, I would like to say something to the rest of the council. We're going back, okay, to when the playoffs came, before the playoffs. Ms. Joanne, you spoke about Lake Harbor Township playing Pleasantville, okay, Jokers. Okay, you said that you liked how disciplined they were, how good they listen to their coach, okay? And how they didn't miss a beat, okay? And I came to the board, asked the board.
I'm sorry, but why do you speak up?
If they want that trophy home, okay? Would you guys buy them jackets? Would you resurface the turf? Would you give them something that they never had before? They used to, they used to have a nice, great big Chevane form with trophies and everything, okay? There should be a brand-new banner inside of the rec center. It's not there, okay? Christmas time, and we had our Christmas party, and the mayor was there, okay? The Jokers came walking up in there. And guess what? None of them had on their brand-new jackets, and they had already won, okay? None of them had their brand-new jackets. So what happened to the agreement that y'all made? Y'all voted it in and said yes. Yes, you did. Yes, you did. You voted in and said yes.
No.
No.
That's not true, Ms. Hamish. Who voted it in?
She spoke about it, because I brought it up. And then she said she was there at the game, okay? And that's when I asked, if they brought that championship home, okay? They needed uniforms. Could we get those uniforms? Could we get new jackets, something that we have not had championship jackets in a very long time? Could we resurface their turf? When it rains outside, it is nothing but a puddle of mud, which is not right. Those children work hard for that. Their new banner is not even up. And they brought that trophy home. They didn't even have a parade. They didn't even get no trophies, nothing. No acknowledgement at all. These kids work hard. And they, they love their mentors. They really do. And they go to them, and the school even calls them for these children. That's how much those kids look up to them. So I feel as if though we should give back to those children. We really should.
Thanks, Ms. Wanda.
I have one more question. If you know one, just one, just one, just one. And I don't need the mic because I speak loud enough.
She's loud.
You know, come on, neighbor, you know I do, okay? When we speak about the taxes, I know you said no to it, okay? Most of y'all live in Pleasantville.
We all do.
We all live in Pleasantville. Yes, yes, yes.
Let them know right now.
All seven of us and the mayor.
And I'm getting ready to go somewhere with my point. I'm getting ready to go somewhere with my point, okay? If the taxpayers, if the money's gonna come from the taxpayers, is it also gonna come from your taxes? Because you live in Pleasantville. So that means that, so that means that you guys should be giving yourself your own raise and not us. That's all I want to say. That's all I want to say.
Thanks, y'all, for voting that raise down. I appreciate that. But could y'all please consider two-way communication? We come up and respond, at least jot the questions down there at some point, respond to the question. Even if you get a general theme that's happening. We have everybody out here, all of us are saying the same thing. That's a theme. Respond to the theme. Y'all sitting there looking at us, and it's like, they don't even care. I'm looking at each face. I'm a watcher of people, body language, behaviors, all of that. That's what I do. So communication is two ways. And we come, could y'all please just think about that? The format of your meeting is, at what point could you even respond to some of the frustra-, or not even frustrations, just questions in general? You know what I mean? Just food for thought. All right, y'all have a good night. Appreciate y'all.
Excuse me. Anybody from the Jokers here?
Craig, I think he's there.
He's in Hallway.
Craig.
He's right here.
Craig, he's there.
Can you come on for a minute, please? Okay. If you give me a diagram, how you want that post, that banner, I'll get it for you. I'll get it for the Jokers. You're, you're, I think they're coming. Yes. I'll, the least of them left, but I'll let them know. Okay? Just give me a diagram, I'll go get it, and I'll give it over to y'all guys.
Okay, I appreciate it.
We appreciate it. Thank you. You're welcome.
Wonderful. And I just want to read something that was posted on the page by the mayor. It says, "The future will be brighter for Pleasantville and its citizens as we work together through these recessional times." That's where we are right now. And I'm going to be honest with y'all. I was very upset that you couldn't get an answer to a question. Y'all know what's on the agenda before the agenda comes to the public. Take some time. Do the research. Ask yourself the questions on there. So that when the public comes up to ask you a question, that you can at least get some type of answer, okay? So just, just think about this. If you're at work and your boss asks you a question, and you don't answer them, do you feel that you're doing what it is that your boss has hired you to do? No. Other thing she has written on here. Our vision for tomorrow is clear and certain. Your coming to Pleasantville will strengthen our partnership to ensure the continuous, the continuing success of the community. You can feel the energy in Pleasantville. Tonight, I didn't feel the energy. Not a positive energy, anyway. And then it says, "Please, call on us whenever you may be, whenever you may be of assistance. And let me know how we are doing to make you proud of your decisions to join our community." I want to be able to do that. When I come here, when I look at y'all, when y'all vote on something. Tonight, I was very disappointed because it's just answer a question. And if you don't know, say, I'm sorry, I can't answer you. And what are we doing for the streets in Pleasantville? What's the next project for the street to be? Uh, Park Avenue on this, I think it's almost done. It's looking good. It's partially looking good. Okay? Where are we at? Where, where are we at? You know, just the little things. You know, the streets are horrible. And I just pray that y'all would really examine what you hear, what you're doing, and just continue to move forward if God has called you to this spot.
Next we have Pastor Jerome Page.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Two thirteen West Pleasant Avenue. I am a taxpayer. I didn't want to say anything earlier. I wanted to see what the vote is going to be. I would just say to the seven council people up there, nothing should go on your agenda if all of you are not on the same page. Nothing should be placed on the agenda to be voted on unless all of you are on the same page. Now, that, that doesn't mean that you vote for it, don't vote for it. Understand the issue and understand what the people would think about the issue. Because remember, they voted you in. And they came out tonight. They didn't have to be. Because seven of you voted today, tonight, and four of you said no. That should have been no before it even was placed on the agenda. Back in the day, when Mayor Peterson was here, whatever Mayor Peterson wanted, he got. But it still was strong counsel, weak mayor. But now you have this, this ward doing a good job. But she's not Peterson. She's a beauty ward. New counsel. One thing I seen on that flyer about the raise, it said, "New counsel is voting." You are a new counsel. That means you have to communicate with every one of you. And no, President, when that hits the agenda, it's already done. People come up, you've already talked to the people. You've got these people, you know some of their names, you got their phone numbers. You call them, you talk to them. You get their opinion. Shouldn't be like here tonight. That was very, some of it was not really intelligent, okay? But listen, guys, I pray for every one of you. Because you got a job to do. You could have not run. Somebody else could have had your seat. And now you're on. Proud of you. I'm proud of you. I owe you. Linda Peyton. Smile a little. Bring it back. Bring it back. Listen, every one of you in here have done the best job you can do. But if you do it together, you'll be even better. Be even better. I had no intentions of coming back to either run for council or anything. Now I'm looking at it. Looking at it. In the Democratic position. Mayor and Ms. Linda Peyton.
Yes, Jerome.
And as a taxpayer, the court system. It is my understanding that the court system now, we have a partnership with Atlantic City. Can you please find out my case that I have filed?
You still don't know?
It hasn't been heard. And I'm not going to remove it. I want it to be heard. Because there's other ways I could have dealt with this. And as a pastor and a religious man that I am, I didn't want to go that way. I wanted to come the way, the proper way, go through the, the court system, okay? I'm asking you, please, just find out what it is, why can't I have a court date? It's been, oh, it's almost two years. All right? Again, as Mr. Harmon said, it's a test for all of you. A test. And it came out good today. Because, okay, I know three minutes, right? It came out good today because the people came out. But what I'm telling you is, get it in check before it even comes to us. Before you say no, it don't go on the agenda. And move on. We got a lot of things to do. A lot of things to do. And I need y'all to help me out, see if the school board members can get paid. But anyway, have a good night.
I would just like to thank you for putting up the flashing stop sign at Delaware Road and then after that, hopefully we'll see less accidents there. Thank you.
Public portion, Ms. Wanda. Any comments? Comments of mayor or council?
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. The mayor. Like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everybody. Just want to let the public know that we are looking into doing, uh, Pleasantville, uh, rent controls in Pleasantville. Looking at that. So we'll let you know with further notice.
What was that? I'm sorry.
We are trying to look into rent control here in Pleasantville.
Rent?
Rent control. So I just want to let everybody know. Thank you. Have a good night, y'all guys.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I do. You know, this isn't how things are supposed to be. Come to the meeting, your voice, your opinion. We vote. And everybody leaves. It's like going to Catholic church. Everybody leave before the priest is done because they want to get out of the parking lot first. What the people did tonight was a complete lesson in civics. And I hope to God that anybody that was in here tonight realizes that and takes it back to the school district and says, we need to take, teach civics in school. Because they were able to do this. But when you leave and don't want to listen to us either, this is a two-way street here. And everybody walks out because they got what they want.
Except me.
Some of the Laker, the Mohegan's are here. And I can thank you for that. But everybody deserves to be heard as well as us. And by leaving, you kind of leave us like, I'm okay. Thank you.
I wish I could respond to that. Anyone else? Seeing anyone? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion, motion, second.